I'd like to call this meeting to order for the city of San Juan at 6:00 PM. May we rise for invocation? Mr. Hornet, can you lead us, sir?
Back for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Under public comments at this time, we have Ms.
Association selected by majority of the police officers of the Police Department of the city of San Juan as the exclusive bargaining agent for the police officers of that department and related matters. We have Ms. Rebecca Hayward here with us. You're having questions? Everything you see in your packet as far as the signatures and what everything else. So, Ms. Rebecca?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Hayward. I've been hired as the attorney to represent the city in the collective bargaining negotiations with the Police Department. Some of you may recall that we bargained with PD last year. And one of the changes that has occurred from last year to this year is that a majority of the police officers changed their membership from CLEET to TMPA. So what you have in your packet should be a petition from TMPA with thirty-three of the forty-seven officers that you have that basically show you that you now have a majority of your police officers who are members of TMPA. So, under 174, lawyer, which is the city of San Juan, needs to recognize affirmatively that TMPA would be the new majority bargaining agent that the city would be negotiating with this year. As far as staff recommendation, our recommendation is that you recognize TMPA as the majority bargaining agent. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. And also, we have representatives from TMPA that can also answer any questions.
What was that number again?
You have thirty-three of forty-seven, so you have a department that is, consists of forty-seven police officers. So you have thirty-three that are now TMPA members. I believed about twenty switched over. That's correct.
Motion approved. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next time, I'd like to invite people to have some presentation on the upcoming 2019 hurricane preparedness.
Real quick, an update on preparation for the hurricane season that's already upon us. I know we did get some good rains last week. We were good to go as far as with sandbags. We have thirteen hundred sandbags ready to go. Our high-profile vehicles are good to go also. Currently, on the, the other day after the meeting, I spoke with, with Mr. Garza from Public Works on working in an MOU with the city afar on the Citrus flooding out there. Should we get any major rainfalls beforehand, we're looking to setting up a pump right there on Citrus and pumping south. We're going to draft up the MOU, but if the emergency does happen, I've already pretty much cleared it with Far that we can pump ports there inlet which is about a hundred feet just south of Citrus to avoid any flooding in that area. And of course, if we get rains like we did last year around this time, the whole street flooded completely. So there wouldn't be much that we can do. But this is just, you know, a couple of inches of rain. If we should get anything, we're good to go on that side of, with the pumping to make sure that area doesn't flood. I know they worked on that line that's there on Citrus. I don't know exactly where they're at, where you're at with that one, David, or what's the lawyer?
Actually, I'm in with the city afar out there this morning. And they'll be here tomorrow after lunch to start rooting the line for us. They have the equipment to do it. So they'll be here tomorrow after lunch and Thursday and Friday, possibly whatever time they need to go ahead and get it all cleaned out.
Now, is there a charge or anything like that?
No, sir.
No, sir.
It's part of the MOU and the interloquals that we have in place.
So currently, I know this past week, we did get several phone calls as far as residents wanting sandbags. I know a lot of times they're insecure. They're scared they're going to get water inside their, their homes and things like that. But we're pretty much prepared to start the distribution should the need arise. I know the main areas of concern, which is usually south and north of town. But it's just a matter of time. We're pretty much prepared, good to go. Any other, anytime that we do get any rains, just feel free to call me. If you all want to start the sandbag distribution, we're good to go, ready to go.
My next question, chief.
Yes, sir.
Are we anywhere here in the near future as far as having a workshop again? You know how we did one last year? You know, do you have a date on that or a month that you're, we can all come together again and?
I think we can go pretty much with the date that we had last year, work it out around that area. And whatever information you all need, we'll compile it and pass it on to the residents. We did an outreach the other day with Precinct Two out there on, early at their convent, the community center. It's pretty much had a good amount of people from the surrounding colonias attend the preparedness for the hurricane season. But we'll pick a date. We can either go with what we went with last year or any date that you're all available, I'm good to go.
If you can, just, you know, get with Mr. Hornet. And so that way, we can figure out, and Mr. Hornet just?
Yes, and we can do, we can also have this workshop along with the comprehensive study. They're spending. We're pretty much ready to tell end of it as far as the study on the personnel side. So we can, we can do that workshop along with the comprehensive study at that time.
Good to go.
Okay.
Any other question?
Question for chief? Not? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions for any of the directors?
Let me, ma'am.
Go ahead, sir.
First question is for Mr. Escobar. I see on your report, a, one of the items was a swimming pool complex at the high school. Do you have any more information on that? Is that gonna, something that's gonna be available to the residents or is it only for the school?
I'd have to, talk to the school. They didn't provide any information on exactly who's going to be allowed or anything like that.
Do you know, Mr. Hornet?
Well, the only, the commitment that we had with the school district is nothing dividing yet. It was that it was going to be along with the residents of San Juan or the community that we will be taking turns as to who's going to use it at what time during the day. And then the city will use it at a different time as well, especially during the summer.
We had, in the previous, we've been sitting down with Dr. King in the past. And some of the board members were present. And we did discuss in reference to the usage of the pool. And I know that we did stress that our goal is to run summer programs, you know, once that pulls up. But of course, we're gonna have to, once we get into the budget season, we're gonna have to budget for employees and stuff like that to help run the swimming pool for the summertime. Now, they also mentioned about also maybe having swimming classes for adults, water aerobics. You know, this was a couple of months ago. Was, how long, how long ago was it? It's been a while, but that was the plan. But as far as having something concrete?
Not yet.
Not yet, sure. But, but now that, I know that, I think they went out for bid already for the architect.
Well, I'm thinking that they're probably barely like at the design phase.
Yeah.
They're going out for bid.
So, so once we, then we're gonna sit down and, you know, coordinate the?
Yeah, because I saw it on the, on the reporting like that. Finally. It's getting there, I know.
Definitely.
Next question, if I may, or comment, Chief Gonzalez, the trucks, the locasas. Great job. There was only three, correct?
Yes, Commissioner, and we are getting another one through, through the agenda item that we have right now here. We are purchasing another one, so it's ready for.
I know the patrol officers are very pleased with those new vehicles.
Yes, sir.
So hats off to you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Enriquez, municipal court. I saw that we collected over thirty thousand during the amnesty month. Great job. That was, that was a good idea. So hopefully, we can do it again sometime soon. All right, but good job. Thank you, ma'am. Chief Tirso, status on the ACE. They're at the fire department, number two. Is it, is it working?
We just got the three price quotes.
Okay.
Commissioner.
So we should be going, getting prepared to requisition for the PO to start the, to award that to the lowest bidder.
Okay, good job. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then Medicare Know, I saw the report. There's been a big improvement on the response time, so yeah, thank them for us.
I'll let them know, Commissioner. I think they're running three units already within our city, so they're doing good.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sanitation Department, Mr. Garza. Great job on the cleanup event. And I see you have something scheduled for this month on, at Reed and Mac, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, Commissioner. It's, we're gonna start doing neighborhood meetings just to educate the public on all the processes that need to be taking place as far as replacing containers, educating on stormwater. And go out there and meet the public and address your concerns if there's any.
Are we on schedule, Mr.?
We are on schedule.
Great. Great to hear that. Thank you. You guys are doing an awesome job. Thank you, sir. Summer programs, Mr. Willingham. Do we have all the instructors set for all the programs that are being offered? We're good to go?
We're good to go.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Assin, I know you're not on there, but I have a question for you. I know I came to the meeting program or the arts and crafts program that you all had. Noticed in the front that they were having issues with the self-checkout. Is there something that can be fixed through IT or? Okay. Do we have the funding for that? Okay. For both. Okay. All right. Okay, we can get that, get on that one so that we can get it up and going. Thank you, ma'am.
Hornet, I know that the city had the phone lines down. But I was, my question was, chief, how do we respond? Because I know your lines were not working. So what was the communication or what will be the communication for residents in case they need a police officer to get a hold of the Police Department and the lines are down?
Yes, Mayor Potem, IT department's been working on that glitch. They're still working real hard on that. And we do have an actual phone number that we give out when they're, they're available, when it's available, when we want the public to contact us. But they're trying to reroute some calls so we can get some calls from the community. But if anybody needs any assistance of any kind, they can still call 911. And we will answer and we, we can redirect those calls to be non-emergency.
You do have a second number just in case that?
We don't. We're just using a mobile phone right now, a cell phone. And the IT is working on that right now. So, but also, we, we work with our counterpart, other cities like Alamo usually. So we usually inform the public that they can pick up our calls, any non-emergency calls. Obviously, 911 is for emergencies. But we have had some people call 911, non-emergency. And we, we advise them that it's a purpose. The reason is because, you know, lines are, the phone, the phone lines are down.
We don't have an actual landline versus the internet type of phone?
Yes, and that's something that the IT department's been working with, with the city manager as well. Just, there's something, I was talking to the IT director, you know, all day today. And there's some glitch that they, they still working on it.
Any other question? If not?
And I just wanted to point out something else that we pointed out that the vehicles, the pickup trucks over PD. We also bought some trucks from sanitation. How many did you get, Mr. Garza?
Trucks and one, another one on the way.
But those are the brush trucks or what are those?
Oh, the grapple trucks.
Grapple trucks.
Grapple trucks. We'll be here probably next week.
Next week, so that will give us a total of how many on this fiscal year?
Four trucks that purchased this year, grapples, a two brush, and one commercial front loader. We're waiting on the side loader.
So thank you for your support on that. We got those trucks and also we got some pickup vehicles for, if I'm not mistaken, and some other departments. So thank you for that.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Hornet.
The next item on the public hearing ordinance is, the first one is hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance in the first reading for a rezoning request from multifamily resident district to single-family resident district of the west ten acres of the east twenty acres of lot, three block thirty-nine Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision located approximately a quarter of a mile west on Cesar Chavez Road along the south side of Sioux Road as requested by Mr. Omar Rios.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is a zone change from multifamily, multifamily residential district. It's located on west of Cesar Chavez Road on the south side of Sioux Road. It's submitted by Omar Rios. He did submit the application. We also sent the advertisement to the paper and sent letters within two hundred foot radius to twenty-one property owners. There's photos in your packet as well as a zoning map as well. They had previously zoned this property from single-family to multifamily in 2017. So basically, they're looking to change it back to single-family residential. And it's gonna be a seventy-five lot residential subdivision. So that's gonna be a positive for the city.
How many lots was that again?
Seventy-five lots. Yeah.
So at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up for, at 6:23 PM. Is there anyone here for or against? For or against? Not? Is there any questions for Mr. Escobar from the commission? No? So I'll go ahead and close this at 6:23 PM. Is there a motion approved?
Motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
The next item, hold a public hearing, consider an ordinance in the first reading for conditional use permit for sale of alcohol beverages on premise consumption at the Armbar Sports Pub located sixteen eighteen North Veterans Boulevard Street illegally described as three point four two acre tract land for the west three thirty-five feet of north, four forty feet of lot twelve, lot five, junk cluster subdivision as requested by Ms. Marina Eitrevino.
There's also a condition use permit for sale of alcohol beverages on premise. It's also for late hours as well. This is located on the southeast corner of Veterans and four ninety-five. It's actually a plaza that's located right there. I don't know if you guys know where that is, but there's a map in the packet so you can look exactly where. It's submitted by Marina Trevino. They did submit the application. They did pay the fee. We also sent the advertisement to the newspaper as required. There's photos as well as a map of the zone. It's currently general business zone in that area, which does allow for, you know, that type of bars, restaurants. But you have to get a condition use permit. That's part of the requirements. Late hours, some of the conditions, they have to have the TVC license, obviously. They have to get their, all their permits from the city. They have to have parking area. They have to buy all city ordinances as well. And they're willing to do that.
And they're, and? They'll be selling liquor as well?
Uh, no, it's just gonna be alcohol as well as, yeah, bleach, yes, sir. Alcohol and liquor.
Oh, because I was gonna say, because at times, right?
Yeah.
Two, two AM?
Five to two AM.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at 6:25 PM. Is there anyone here for or against? For or against? If not, is there any question from the commission?
If I may?
Go ahead, sir.
The hours, just go ahead, till two o'clock in the morning, is that what we've been allowing for the other?
Yeah, because they're requesting a late hours permit, so they can go to two AM.
Thank you, sir.
We talked sooner, what plaza is this?
Uh, it's on the south, southwest, southeast side. There's a plaza there.
Where the city cafe is?
Right there.
Oh, okay.
I think it used to be a Buffalo before, something like that.
Yeah, and it's one of the suites that they're requesting.
Yes. Any other questions? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and close this at 6:26 PM. Is there a motion approved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Item hold a public hearing, consider an ordinance in the first reading for conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol beverages for on-premise consumption at Lisa Sports Pub located twelve oh one nine East FM four ninety-five Street for legally described as lot thirty, Morning Wood subdivision as requested by Ms. Alisa Gámez.
There's also a condition use permit. It's for on, of Lisa Sports Pub. This is also for late hours permit. It's located on the west side of Cesar Chavez and four ninety-five. It's also an existing plaza as well. She's applying, she's moved from a different location, which was similar to the location we just discussed. But she's looking for a different location, so she's requiring a condition use permit. It's Alisa Gámez and it's for the Lisa Sports Pub. We did send the advertisement to the paper. They did submit the application as well. And there's also a map of the zone, which it's general business, which also does allow for this. They just have to get a condition use permit. And the hours are the same, five PM to two AM. And they're required to meet all the conditions of the city. If they didn't meet some of the conditions, then we can take the permit away.
I'm gonna go ahead and open at 6:27 PM. Is there anyone here for or against? For or against? Any questions for the members of the commission? If not, I'll go ahead and close this at 6:27 PM. Is there a motion approved?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Next item, hold a public hearing, consider an ordinance in the first reading for a rezoning request from Expressway Corridor District, east of single-family residence district of fifteen point nine three two acre tract of land at a lot of three block thirty-five Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision located approximately a quarter of a mile west of Cesar Chavez Road along the south side of Sergeant Leonard Trevino Road as requested by Stefania Rios.
For this item, the property owner requested the city take no action on this one.
No action?
Yeah, no action.
And this is for item D, right?
Yeah, for D. Uh, the property owner.
Property owner?
They weren't able to come, so they wanted to just take no action.
That comes, no, this is the second time that he?
I was gonna say.
Yeah. So, okay. No action it is.
Item, consider adoption of an ordinance in the first reading for rezoning. Did we do that one already?
No, 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 no.
Item E.
Yeah, item E, it's, I'm sorry, that was the same as item A. So item E and F is a repetition. They're, they're the same. It was a typo that it was inputted. Yes, both of them. Bye, Mr. Escobar. ENF?
Yeah, those are?
They're the same.
Repetitive.
Apologies for that. Under appointments, consider removing appointment of board members related to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mr.? I'm sorry.
Was, was item F also duplicate or not?
Yes, item F was the same one.
It's a duplicate also?
Yes.
And what's a duplicate, you know, which one is?
It's out of A.
A on the?
See, on item E, it was adoption of an ordinance in the first reading, but it's the same one as item F.
Same as Rios, it's the same one?
It's the same one, right?
I think so.
Yes, yeah, okay.
It was a typo from our side.
Yeah. Because I saw it twice. Okay, oh, go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This item is for the San Juan Parks and Recreation Board, which consists of seven members serving two-year staggered terms. As per the Parks and Recreation bylaws, if a member is absent three or more consecutive times, the individual shall be automatically dropped for membership. At this time, there's two members that have expired, who are Mr. Mark Alanis and Stephanie Álvarez. If I'm not mistaken, they, their term expired about a month ago. So attached to the, to the item are the applications that were received, which are a total of four. Mr. Gilberto Basalua, Ramiro Herrera Jr., Hinovebo Quintanilla Jr., and Mr. Robert Williamson, which is the last application. He's actually gonna be up for, for an expired term as well. So he just went ahead and submitted his application for reappointment.
These will only have two?
Yes, two.
Expiring already?
Yes.
If I may, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Mr. What, that those two members that are up did not submit an application, did they know they were supposed to?
I, I informed them and I, and I let Ms. Cabazos know. They would be willing to if they were reappointed.
Okay, they're willing to serve?
Right.
Okay, both of them?
Correct.
Do you know how long they've served already, sir?
Those were the two, they were on before I came on board. And we could not find any record of an exact appointment date. But we know it was, I came on board November or October 31st of 2016. So they were prior to that. So my question was, we need to establish a new reappointment to establish a date for a new two-year term. So those are the two that are up. They were, they, they? They were there before you came in? Correct. So they needed to be reappointed or, or appointed, or new, or new members appointed, whatever the commission desires. But so we could set a date for the, for the new two-year term.
I'd like to make a motion to assign Gilberto Moises Basalua and Ramiro Herrera Jr. Is that the coach, correct?
That's correct.
So that's in the motion? Right? Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, we'll skip to item B as we cover already item A on discussion of possible action. Consider ratifying approval of budget adjustment at sanitation department amount of fifteen thousand dollars for machinery and equipment, other equipment to the tires in two blue nine item. Mr. Garza?
Mayor Commissioners, we're seeking approval to ratify the budget adjustment to our tires and repairs. This is our repairs and tires and to be purchased for sanitation trucks.
Any questions for Mr. Garza? If not, is there a motion?
A move? Second?
All those?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Selecting an engineering firm and authorize city manager to enter the contract agreement for engineering services within design specification and construction of additional parking are cube bid nineteen dash oh four oh five oh one at this one police department. Mayor Commissioners, at this time, if I may, I'd like to ask that we take no action as we're looking at different options on the monetary side of it.
All right. We'll go ahead and take no action under C. And I know on D, right? C, but? Go ahead and put it on the record.
Okay. Okay, and also, I'd like to recommend no action as there's still some, on the following item, item D, which is consider entering into memorandum of understanding between the city of San Juan and American Red Cross. Because we have not received any, some information that Chief Tirso is needing. And on top of that, the MOU that we currently have with the Red Cross expires until twenty twenty-two, twenty-one. So we've got some time for that.
Okay, sounds good. Right, so under D, we'll take no action.
Item E, consider ratifying approval of a budget amendment in the sanitation department in amount of forty thousand dollars for machine and equipment, other equipment to repair maintenance line item. Mr. Garza?
Mayor's Commissioners, this is another budget adjustment for our repair and maintenance. And this, again, it's for our sanitation trucks. This should cover the cost for the rest of the fiscal year.
Any questions for Mr. Garza?
And it's coming out of, out of where?
This is coming out of capital outlay item?
Capital outlay?
Yes.
Okay.
From the sanitation.
Out of their budget?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr.? If not, is there a motion approved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Authorize advertising bid proposal for the street paving improvements project phase three. We have Mr. Garza, and I know we have the engineers here ready to give you a presentation on the streets, phase three that were selected. There should be in your packet also there on the, on the screen as to the ones that are highlighted and also listed as the street names. Mr. Garza? In your packet, you should have on the spreadsheet as to the estimated cost, the street names. And at the end of it, there's an estimated cost of one point four. We feel that we may be under the, what we currently have. But we're gonna go out and bid it out this way. Now, should there be additional streets that you may like to add? We can do it at this point. And if we will get the bid, we can always negotiate back with our country, you know, selected firm so that we can either take and make sure that we're at our budget.
One next to it, I think it's West Tex, I mean, it's sorry, East Texas Avenue, I believe. I think that one in the corner, that's all, um, I think they already did it twice, if I'm not mistaken, Remo? On the patching? And it keeps on, and it's cracking already, so I think we can, we can include one of those streets. I believe it's um, it will be the, the other one, Iowa? And then he, I think, is it West Texas? And the second street turn in? If it's Kansas, it'll be the other one next to it. I think it's uh, I don't know, it's uh, Iowa or West, East Texas. One of the streets, Chief, do you know it? The, the. Where Lupe, uh, Lupe Rojas lives?
Ohio.
Ohio. So it's that little piece from Ohio. There's a, again, there's a street in between on Ohio and it's a little piece. Okay, from, from there on, goes all the way and it turns and hits Kansas. I think that's the one you already did twice already, Remo, on, I think we can include that one too, if there's possibility.
Iowa?
Ohio.
We can look into that one, Commissioner, and see uh, bring it back and see the condition of that street.
Yeah, because.
Now, this is, this is the uh, the, the streets that are listed here, this is based on the report that was given to everybody as far as the fair, poor and.
Okay, so we're going from worse to better, right?
Yes, sir.
I think uh, that Ohio Street, it's a little bit worse than, than uh, Kansas. But let's look into it, maybe.
The other ones, also, Mr. Arhona, I don't know if they're, if they're on the, on the list at all, but that uh, subdivision that I mentioned to you, Tierra de Las Palmas or something? Washingtonia Queira?
Washingtonia, yes.
Yeah.
That's Washingtonia.
Okay, maybe one of those.
Is that the one uh, going from Sergeant Trevino to four ninety-five?
No, 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 this is over here where Clover Elementary is at.
Clover Elementary, okay. Can we look into that one?
Loma, there's uh. Loma Linda, Loma. I think there's two streets.
Loma Alta, no, Loma Luna, Loma Sur. One of those streets.
Off of Sioux Road, you know the Lomas Linda, Loma Verde? I think there's, if you're going, um, if you're going east, I think it's the last two streets, right before, right after the idea. Uh, I think those streets are, are in bad shape as well. Yeah, like Ancoon and the other first three or four streets have been paved. But I think there was two that, that weren't, that were left, I mean, I don't know what happened, but I think maybe we need to look just to assess those streets as well. Um, okay. Also, um, also, we need to check on the subdivision on the west side of Alamo Middle School. That corner, if you turn on, on uh, Cesar Chavez and Alamo Middle School, that subdivision. I think it's uh, Sun Valley, no?
It's already there.
That, all that subdivision is in there. Um, it's a.
Oh, sundown, sunsol, yeah, okay, I didn't see that little square over here.
Okay, yes.
Okay, we're okay on that.
What, what about the street, Mr. Arhona, the one that uh, first uh, sweeper?
I, oh, Coil.
Coil, it's here.
Coil or Coil?
Coil, oh, coil, coil, it's here.
Coil, it's here.
It's there, yeah.
That one, the sweeper, kinda. Now, the one where over here, where King, that subdivision will be done by Urban County. Right? This is just for the people in, you know, to know that. It's not gonna be in these plans, but it's coming under the Urban County.
We're looking, we're looking in August, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Is that uh, Mr. Escobar, is that the timeframe?
Yeah, it's like August, September.
Right.
And that's Bertrill?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right off of Bertrill. Okay. I know the only street there that's been paved is Andrews.
Andrew.
Yeah, Mayfair and then the other.
And they're not that big streets, you know?
Correct.
The last street, man?
Yes.
Last street that runs uh, east and west, I mean, east and west is pretty bad.
Right now. La Hanta.
Pretty bad. And all those that come out under the.
Very, yeah, sure. So. No?
That's all pro bono, right, Mr.?
Yeah. So we just, we'll move on this?
Yeah.
And then you come back and.
Once we open them up, and we see that the uh, the item is gonna be over, we'll turn, yeah? Then we'll bring it before, these are the streets that uh, that we need to make some adjustments.
So, so if there's any way you can submit on the next round, as far as in our packets, the, the assessment of those particular streets? You know what I'm saying, how you mentioned they were fair or?
We can do that.
Okay. Alright, with that being said, uh, you have any other questions? No? With that being said, is there a motion approved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next item, uh, discussion of possible election to authorize city manager to execute a budget amendment in the amount of seventy-five thousand from return earning, earnings from the storm waterfront for the repair maintenance of storm drainage lines and for the purchase of two utility trailers. At this point, uh, because of the fact that the city of uh, FAR is working with the uh, City of San Juan and M O U, uh, there's not gonna be a need for that much of a, a cost, the seventy-five thousand, since there's gonna be an M O U on it. Uh, the only thing that we're gonna be asking is for the cost of utility trailers, which is at roughly three thousand thirty-eight?
About three thousand eight hundred.
Three thousand eight hundred each. And this is coming from the uh, storm uh, drainage fund. That, a couple of them, two. Two.
Two?
Yes.
And thirty-eight hundred? So seventy-six hundred?
Roughly about that cost, maybe a little bit more, a little bit less.
That?
Roughly about thirty-eight hundred.
But it's like, but total, total for two, seventy-six?
Yes.
And so, so the motion would be to approve the uh, amendment in the amount of seventy-six hundred instead of seventy-five thousand, correct?
Right. Yes, because the seventy-five thousand we're not gonna use, or the seventy thousand at this point. If we feel that the city of FAR was not successful in doing that, the cleaning?
Right.
Then eight thousand for both.
Using them for public, there's modifications that we want for the trailers, so we need the additional, that's why. If you look at the amendment, there's a second line item for eight thousand total for the adjustment to the amendment. And since we're, since we're gonna use the trailers for public outreach, there's some modifications that we wanna do to the trailers, so that'll cover the cost.
Alright.
Instead of seventy-six.
So the eight thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It was not, was not included in this, in this uh, item.
The budget adjustment.
It's in the budget adjustment, correct, but not in the wording, not in the verbiage itself.
Correct, yeah.
Back to verbiage. Well, we, we can put in a motion?
You can, you can, I mean, we've noticed enough, but you can make amendment to that, to.
So motion, motion to approve the eight thousand budget amendment?
I'll say, not to exceed ten. Not to exceed ten thousand.
Not to exceed ten. And not to exceed ten thousand. Okay, that is, that is in the form of a motion?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item, uh, discussion of possible action to reclassify the mechanic small engine position in the central garage division to mechanic A certified.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, right now we have an opening for mechanic, uh, we grade that position to hire an A S C certified mechanic. Uh, I think this uh, be a cost-effective move, so we can have more of the breakdowns, repairs that need to be done to our trucks, done in-house versus outsourcing the work.
Be a starting salary for a certified A S C mechanic?
We're looking at uh, fifteen dollars an hour.
Fifteen an hour?
Fifteen point oh two, that, that's what it says on the uh, on the uh, on the backup information. Reclassing from eleven.
You don't have that either?
Yeah. It's on the, let me look at it.
I have, I came from, I came from the last one, so next one.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Garza?
If I may?
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Garza, so then, with this new, you're creating a new position, in essence?
Uh, basically, yes, sir.
So, so we're gonna do away, start with the budget process, you're not gonna have the small engine position, or what is it, the uh?
Mechanic?
Right, the small engine position, you, you're just gonna go with a mechanic A S, A S E certified?
Yes. Reclassified.
And do away with the other one?
With a regular mechanic.
Right?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
How long have we been advertising for that position, the mechanic?
Mechanic, we'd uh, probably advertise uh, probably about a month now.
And we've only gotten maybe two applicants. So, I feel that, we feel that if uh, if we were to uh, advertise for somebody that is certified with this amount of money, I think it would be more inviting for, for someone to come over and apply for, you know, with the city. And in the long run, save some monies that we're sending, that we are sourcing. So that, that's the goal here, so I think it's doable.
So how much were you paying per hour in the, uh, position?
Mechanic, we're paying that, I believe it was ten seventy-six an hour.
I think that fifteen is gonna attract.
Uh, yes, uh, our game plan is to go to S C C, uh, find out, uh, meet with the instructors there and see we can uh, create a partnership with the South Texas College.
Now, is that the going rate, Mr. Garza, fifteen bucks a, an hour? Or A S, you know?
Contacted, what city was it, that's been pretty much the same as what we're proposing? Yes, what city did we contacted that it was paying, is pretty much comparable to what we proposed in the fifteen oh two?
We contacted Enberg, and then I think it was also FAR.
FAR.
But we were kinda trying to do it in the middle, you know, to see like, like you mentioned, if we could attract people. And with this change, a, and if I may, it's also gonna amend the classification and compensation plan. Okay, because it's a, basically a new position, they're reclassifying it, so it's gonna amend the classification and compensation plan.
That fifteen bucks an hour is not enough for? It doesn't attract. I don't think it's very attractive.
I think, cause he was gonna reach out, correct me if I'm S T C or some, somewhere, that was his goal.
Far as reaching out to the school, it was gonna be for internships. But as far as for a N A's mechanic certified, that was not gonna be anything, it was only for internships to come over and help us out. And maybe we can hire at the end, somebody from, from S T C.
We should have a little bit more competitive as far as we, we wouldn't have to actually start and then we lose them, kind of stop the uh, the turnover rate. That's what I'm, what I'm thinking right now, what the board feels.
That's basically entry level, pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, but you, you know, if you're gonna get somebody with experience in, in mechanic and this, you know, you don't have an entry level, you know, these people have experience, so the experience will make, you know? So, that's my opinion, you know?
Well, I guess if you can just have some kind of uh, window to where you can maybe start at fifteen and pay twenty, twenty-five, depending the years of, of experience they have, yeah? And how their, their looks.
Yes, sir.
You know what I'm saying? I, I'm just saying, cause. Yeah, either that or work something out on your salary, simple as that.
No, I think so, you know, if you wanna start there and have it negotiable according to experience, because you might find somebody with ten, fifteen years' experience that are gonna ask a little bit more and will give you a better, do work, better work on, on your trucks.
Correct.
You know?
Starting salary at fifteen and not to go over.
If that's a, if that's a desire of the board?
Based on experience.
To give you a, a scale?
Okay.
On the low end, fifteen or twenty, if that's.
Maximize it out of twenty-five? Is that, is that what we're saying?
Let's ask, Miss, what was, I know that you're trying to shot, uh, shot the, this in the middle, what were the, what were the higher ends in Edinburgh and FAR when you inquired about this position?
Outsource some of their items also, because of you get certified, obviously it's gonna have to increase the pay. So, and based on, and if I may, on the comprehensive study, that's something that we're gonna have to add as well. Because these are positions that are, that require certifications. So maybe what you can say is depending on qualifications and experience. They're, they're like in their early, and they're what, twenty, twenty-two?
Just make it starting, starting, like a fifteen, tops twenty-two, depending on their experience.
And certification.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, consider resolution to support and participate in the twenty twenty census and appointment for the complete count committee for the City of San Juan, Mr. Escobar?
Uh, the city was elected by the, the U S Census for the twenty twenty, a year, and this is a resolution uh, to actually participate in the complete count committee. Uh, you don't actually have to uh, you know, get some, appoint people right now, but you can actually, you know, think about it and then uh, we create that committee, but this is a resolution just in support, and uh, Mr. Albert Morales, he was gonna be here today, but he's actually center representative, so I don't know if he has a few words.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, my name is Juan Miguel Gonzalez, I do work for the Census Bureau, I am the uh, partnership specialist for Cameron and Willacy County, but I, I can also cover Idago County as well, so if you have any questions on the complete count committee, I'm here to answer them for you. Well, when are you gonna start with the twenty twenty census? The twenty twenty census opens in March twelfth of twenty twenty, and it ends uh, July, uh, July thirtieth, we just got an update today. So it's about a four, it's about a four-month window that you'll be able to respond. And uh, how many persons are you thinking of hiring to pick up census or? So. It is a committee, but you are hiring people to do the census. Yes, we are, we are actually in hiring phase right now, so for the twelfth, uh, the twelfth state uh, region that Texas is a part of, we're hiring upwards of a hundred thousand people, that's uh, across the board for, of multiple positions. But for the local community that will affect your community, uh, we are hiring right now, as a matter of fact, we've started uh, calling people already for, for, they've applied for the positions of address canvassers, uh, and those are being paid probably, it's uh, it starts out at twelve dollars an hour during training and it goes up to fourteen dollars an hour. And those will be going around your neighborhood and verifying addresses uh, from the previous uh, uh, databases that uh, the City of San Juan had provided. After that, in January, February will be the second phase of it, and those will be what we traditionally call, and we all know as the door knockers that go do the census. Uh, those will be the enumerators, and those will be getting hired in January, February in preparation for uh, opening date of March twelfth and through July tw- uh, July thirtieth. Again, at the same pay rate. But as far as a complete count committee, those would be if uh, those would be mostly comprised of community members. So if it's a cross-section of your community that represents you on this committee, that way they will str- uh, set up a strategy to uh, to target your low response areas. Uh, so, uh, once you set up your committee mayor and, and city manager, then uh, we can, we'll do a, a formal training for the, for that, for those committee members, and then we'll sit with them and guide them and direct them, well, not direct, but more guide as to the strategy that uh, San Juan can do, and, and we'll use examples, for example with uh, maybe McAllen, uh, like I said, I cover Browns on Harlingen, so we, we share all these ideas, it's not gonna be what we're gonna let you know what anybody else is doing, because this is a win-win for everybody.
The, your committee for the city for San Juan will be different, or will be also combined with the COG?
It will, it will be, you can have a representative on the COG. Uh, today, we actually did met, meet at the COG, I know that McAllen was uh, talked about what their strategy is and what they're doing right now. Uh, I know that I, I attended the one for FAR when they, when they got trained and they had their committee. Uh, so everybody is going to be, it's gonna be unique to your community, you can have a representative on there, but we highly recommend that each city have their own complete count committee. Even though you may have somebody at the COG, or you may have somebody at Willacy County, because Willacy County has their own complete count committee. Uh, but they don't know your neighborhoods as well as your, as well as your citizens of San Juan do. So this is why we do stress and highly recommend that you, you establish one here.
Any other questions? No? Is there a motion approved?
Remove, again.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next item, consider resolution authorize city manager submitting application for funding to the office of the Governor, Homeland Security Division for Idago two thousand and eighteen Operation Storm Garden Project, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Commission. This is just the standard uh, grant that we submitted, in the basic figure of twenty eighteen fiscal year, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and uh, and a truck as well. And that's already been approved by the state. And that's already been approved by the state.
Any, uh, questions for Chief Gonzalez? If not, is there a motion approved?
A move?
Second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Next item, consider resolution for the application submitted for participation in the Techstar Investment Pool, allowing the city to invest its funds in a spectrum way to maximize the city return on investments while still maintaining the fiscally prudent, uh, prudent investments. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, this, uh, Techstars is an investment service created by governments for local governments for transferring funds for investments and achieving solid fiscal responsibility and critical challenges for our, uh, government. Techstars office offers an investment options that provide security, liquidity, and efficiency. Resolution, this resolution is to include Mr. uh, uh, Mr. Arhona as our city manager, myself, the finance director, and our assistant finance director, Maria Beltran. Uh, this is, uh, recommended by our financial advisor, Mr. Chris Bellan.
Questions for, uh, Mr. Leroy at this time? If not, is there a motion approved?
A move?
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Under consent agenda, we have item A, B, and apologies again, C and D, and I kind of noticed was when we imported the, uh, the agenda from the last meeting to this meeting, it duplicated some items. So C and D is a duplicate from A and B, so under consent agenda, it's A and B, E and F. Um, those are the only four items.
So C and D, we omit, right?
Yes, they're, they're duplicate.
C and D. Under consent agenda, is there anything that we need to amend or modify at this time? If not, is there a motion approved? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
A move?
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. This meeting has been adjourned at six fifty-nine PM, thank you.